Good evening, welcome to the Town Hall of Dyton's Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 23rd at 6 o'clock PM. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Could we please have a call to order?
Nicole Mello, present.
Mark Pacheco, present.
And Peter Cairns, present.
And now, could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance in just a moment of silence right after for Kristina Rosen, Christina Rosen, who we lost this week? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alexander, you're just in time.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Alright.
We won't give you a hard time, I promise.
Hey.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Ogania.
Ogania.
Just have you speak into the mic, please.
Which means what?
It's Portuguese.
Oh, that's okay. So you have an Eagle Stop project, you want to tell us about it?
Yeah, sure. It's, I want to try and build a flag retirement box.
Sure.
Around this building, if possible. And it's basically just a place for people in the community to put their like old unusable flags that can't be flown anymore, to like, for organizations such as the Boy Scouts to go and retrieve those flags and do a proper retirement of them.
Okay, what is the proper retirement of them?
So, we would get together on our meeting day or night, and we would start a fire, and silently we would slowly burn off the flags until there's nothing left of them.
Okay, great. I didn't know that's how the property, you've heard all kinds of rumors, but how we're supposed to be disposed of, but I didn't realize that was a process that you guys did. Great. You talked to Tom Ferry, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And you talked to Jim Aguirre about the property and where it's going to go and?
I have not.
You have not? Tom, is that somebody who he should go through?
I don't believe so.
No?
One mechanic, myself, and Beth Reese.
Okay. And it's going to go on this property here? At the Old Town Hall or the other Town Hall?
I have a, I had a presentation.
Yep.
That I could give you guys.
Sure.
Yeah.
I have a couple of proposed locations.
Okay, great. You have that with you?
I do, yes.
Sure. Must be excited.
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, I can let you know when to. So, on the, the picture right there is a reference photo that I found online. It has a little awning over it, and below it is a box where people can dispose of their flags for us to collect them. So, here I have the purpose of the box and any maintenance that has to be done to it. So, I would hope to have it checked monthly by my troop, and just check to see if there's any blue pairs needed for it, or touching of the paint or anything like that, and just to check if there's any flags that are dropped off there. It's not a very large box, it's roughly four by four feet, and in total with the covering would be eight feet tall. And it would be constructed of pressure-treated wood, some shingles, stone, and paint. And we estimated it to cost around $600.
Did you raise the funds already?
I have not.
Okay.
But I'd start that after this.
Sure.
Here I have two proposed locations at the Old Town Hall. One of them is out front, in the park, like near the parking lot, on the grass, like where people can easily see it from the road and if they're just in the area. And the second one is lowered by the vet. I thought it was a fitting spot.
Sure.
The Veterans Agency and the flag disposal box would be there. It would be right on the grass, probably between the building and the handicap park on the side.
Okay.
I thought of two other locations over by the new Town Hall. One of them is closer to the, to the, the road and on the grass area behind the parking. And then there's another one that's up against like, closer to the side of the Town Hall, where you would be able to see it if you pulled into that parking lot from the main road itself.
The other Town Hall gets more foot traffic. Yeah. But I think it'll look nice over here, especially with the veterans being just in the same building. I'm not to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm.
Oh, you're upset anyway. Great. Nicole, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
How did you come up with the, this idea?
My cousin from Troop 2000, a couple, couple of years ago, actually, he, he did this as his project for his town, and I just really liked the idea and looked into it, and we didn't have one here, so I wanted to try and build one.
Oh, we advertise. That is tier and people to use. We can make announcements here certainly during the Selectmen's meeting. But are you going to do anything on behalf of your project?
I can let people know in the different extracurricular groups.
Okay.
Like scouting, I can let them know what we built.
Sure.
And use.
Great.
We could use, people could post on Facebook and.
Absolutely.
If they wanted to.
Yep. Awesome. Awesome. Like I said, the other Town Hall gets a lot more foot traffic, so it would be seen. And obviously you can make that decision along with Tom as to where you think it should go, but I'm sure you'll have the right, right decision made. Okay, great. Well, we have no other questions for you, but congratulations. Thank you for coming this evening, and good luck with it.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I like location too, as well.
Yeah.
At the Town Hall, yes.
You have to do anything further with that, or is?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, just a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure meeting you, good luck. On to announcements, please.
On Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Drug Enforcement Administration DEA will coordinate with the Dyton Police Department for a one-day prescription take-back initiative event to remove potentially dangerous controlled substances from the homes. On Monday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, there will be a pumpkin patio pot fundraiser for the Dyton Historical Society at Arugio Farms, 1522 William Street. This is $50 per person, includes all materials. Please bring your gloves, pre-register required. Call 508-669-6988. Early voting notice, in-person early voting for November 5th. 2024 state elections will be held at the Dyton Town Hall Saturday, October 19th through Friday, November 1st. See the attached flyer for voting hours, and I believe they're online. The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next on November 16th, located at Town Hall in the lower level.
Uh, this is a time for public input, or there'll be an additional one? Does anybody have anything they want to talk about tonight? No, want to continue? Okay. Town administrators' report, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Al. Again, thank, you know, thank this board for selecting me and putting your faith in me, and so far, it's been a good three days, and I, again, I'm really happy that you selected me, and I'm, I'm looking forward to coming to many, many, many more of these meetings. I know that sounds crazy, but it's something I look forward to doing.
Sure.
So, as far as the town administrators' report to you, we had started, under Jim, a pre-town meeting meeting, to just go, the special, the warrant for the special of that town. I was attended by Sue, the other finance committee, Serena, Karen, myself, along with Town Council, Matt Costa. We reviewed the articles, there were no substantive or no substantive changes. We had a discussion on Article 6 that you may be aware of. I know you have received a, an email from Kevin Smith regarding FinCom's recommendation of the $1.2 million versus the selection. Kevin Smith provided to you an email explanation of the MSBA reimbursement. Additionally, that Article 13, you know, these are really the two articles that got some traction, the 250th Anniversary Committee, for the $4,000. I know you had, you know, you called it a grant, the words meant that it worked a little bit. It's more to be matching funds.
Right.
You know, than a grant. And then, you know, I think in both instances, for the, for Article 6 and for Article 13, we have to, the, the Selectment should confirm where the funds are going to come from, and I think Serena had provided recommendations for, for the additional funds, for the, for the school would be from the, from the capital account, and then at 4,000, 4,000 passes from the, from free cash. In addition to, to special town meeting, we had a discussion in the office, you know, how do we prepare for the November 5th collection and that exclusion question. So, we're going to move up, you know, it's a very good presentation that was done on it. I'm going to move the presentation up in the webpage. Civic Plus has what's called a news blast, so I'm going to put that out there. I was going to get in touch with Dyton, Dyton Cable Access TV, see if they could, see if they could rerun the presentation with some frequency, just so people are aware what the issues are.
Sure.
And that's all I have for now.
Great. Well, thank you very much, it was a great first presentation. But yeah, we hope we have many more meetings to come to.
Yeah.
Selectmen, do you have a report for us, Nicole?
I just wanted to mention that last Friday, the COA hosted the Vaccine Clinic that we have every year. On this year, we didn't have it within the Health Department, just because we're trying to rebuild that. So they took on that for me, and they did an excellent job. I came, they had it set up fabulous, I couldn't have done it better myself. And they're always just, they're really phenomenal, so I really appreciate them doing that this year.
Great, thank you. Mark?
No report.
Okay. The only thing I want to say is, can I mention your new?
Sure.
Uh, Mark, our Selectman, has added an addition to his family, his wife gave birth on Friday.
Friday.
And it's a girl.
Girl.
It all went well, I heard.
All went well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Better bring it to the next meeting.
I will. Got us sworn in.
We should be for Halloween.
Right, uh, yeah.
Future voter.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving on to all business, please. This is a review, discuss, and act. Board of Selectmen, how are they meeting schedule in the proposed changes? The only thing that I have is December 18th is going to be a placeholder, if we needed it or not, because we are not meeting on the 25th, we didn't know if we were going to do it on 18th. So, somehow on this schedule should be that it's a placeholder, so that if we decide not to have the meeting, not angry, angry who might show up here.
Thank you, I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, I have no issues. So this is a review, discuss, and act. So is there any more discussing? If not, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept with the edits as suggested by Chairman Karen.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
On to new business. Again, this is a review, discuss, and act, signing the warrant for the special town meeting.
Sorry, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The assessors are on November 20th, having their tax rate hearing.
November 20th.
November 20th.
Okay.
And I thought in the past that the OS also met on November 20th?
Yes, we do.
We're talking about December for the placeholder meeting.
Okay.
November 20th is listed on here.
It's on the initial year.
Yes.
I can also make a notation, that's the tax.
Okay. So are we ready to sign the warrant? This is a review, discuss, and act.
Did we have to make?
Changes.
To Article 6 and 13 funding sources, I believe?
Oh, we're going to add them in there?
I believe we have to.
Yeah, change anything right now.
You've got identified funding sources generally.
Oh.
Right now it can stay as it is.
Okay.
Okay.
On the town meeting. Okay.
Oh, alright. Nice.
Now, what happens with Article 13? We're, we're voting for the 4,000 as a cap. If, if at the town meeting, it gets changed or denied, not, not denied, if it gets changed or somebody doesn't vote against the way it's, it's worded, and they don't want to do a matching, and they wanted to just go for the 4,000, how will that be, be done?
So that motion, I would think, would come from the floor.
Yep.
Do you need to change their mind?
No, not so much to change their mind, but.
Flattery as opposed to matching funds?
Right.
For 4,000 too.
Yep. I just said I heard concerned, concerns about it. It's not a big deal. They just, I think there might be a question about how it works, and if they can just get the solid 4,000 and get raising of the 4,000 on top of that, it would make it easier for, for something they have to commit to.
I would think that could be made on the floor. It's a lot of work. They would have to have it worded properly in a motion.
Yeah, okay. So, either way, the maximum that we're going to spend is $4,000 right now.
Unless they give you a motion for 8,000.
Okay.
Yeah, as approved, yep.
I, I don't want to muddy the waters, I just, just ask. Okay. So, does anybody have any questions about the, the warrant?
I don't.
No.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant as presented for signature.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor for signing the warrant tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
I will do that at the end. Thank you. The next few are basically all the same. This is for Ralph being assigned to different, acting as the representative from the Selectmen's Board for Signatures, and I guess we'll do each one. Review, discuss, and act authorization for the town administrator?
Um, I have no, yeah, I'm making a motion. Motion to allow for the town administrator for the signature authorization form.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, appointment of Ralph to the Finance Committee, I mean, I'm sorry, Insurance Advisory Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Appointment to Ralph to the TIF Review Board?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the TIF Review Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Do you want all these appointments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
It doesn't come with a pay raise. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of Ralph to the Policy Review Board?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the Policy Review Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appointment to Ralph to the SIC Bank Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the SIC Bank Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment of Ralph to the Capital Outlet Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the Capital Outlet Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment Ralph to the Solid Waste Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ralph to the Solid Waste Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it for you, Ralph.
Thank you.
You get your plate full, certainly. This is a review, discuss, and act, request to appoint John Neger to the Cable, to the Cable Committee. Usually at this point, we require that the person be here for us to appoint, but you have something you want to add to?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to speak on John's behalf.
Sure.
So, last week, on Thursday, John and the Cable Committee had about an hour long, I don't want to call it an interview, but it was, we had an interview of what his skillset was, and we're pretty confident in his prior experiences and going forward that he would be able to execute.
Great.
At a high level.
Sure.
With the Cable Committee, and be a great addition.
Okay, thank you very much.
How many more, are you looking for more folks? Are you guys fully staffed?
Um, so we have one more opening, the KB, the Cable Committee caps at five, so right now we're at four. So, if anybody, if anybody wants to, by all means.
Awesome.
But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, John comes highly recommended, and he is known by the Selectmen, so we're going to make, accept him tonight that John has to be here. So, this is a review, discuss, and act. Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
I'll make a motion to appoint John Neger to the Cable Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This, again, the review, discuss, and act, the Dyton Lions, Dyton Lights on Festivities. Okay. This is for 11:30, 24, the hall and the surrounding area. This is for approval of the, of the grounds. It just needs our, our approval. It's the same thing that happens every year. Food dessert, but it's, it's a free event, so they'll need all the necessary permissions from everyone, including the Selectmen. I don't know if the Board of Health gets involved, I don't think they do, because it's food. I think it's just cake and.
They use the lion's surf safe, the lions are there.
Okay.
Yeah. So they, we do get the lions.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to approve it?
I'm on the committee, so I'm going to abstain from it.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the, the request, and it also asks us to waive the fee, so I will also include that in my motion to waive the fee for the Dyton Slime Festival.
Alright, I'll step down and second the, the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The disbanding of the current agricultural commission. We have talked to the person who's left on the committee, and he wants to keep it going. I understand we have three candidates who want to be on the, the committee, that they'll decide, interview them and decide whether or not they, they should be appointed, and then they'll come before the Selectmen for approval.
Okay.
So we're not going to disband them, so I don't know if we just take this under advisement or table it, I guess.
Make a motion to table disbanding of current agricultural commission.
Motion made?
Um, I'll second that.
And seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then this is the correspondence, this is again a review, discuss, and act, resignation of Matthew Silva as a full-time firefighter paramedic, and he sent us a letter to the chief asking to formally resign his position. As typical, we just don't read the resignations on, on, on the air.
I'd make a motion to accept the resignation of Matthew Silva with thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of the warrants.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrants paid by October 17th, 2024, 16A dash 25 for $124,382.67, 16B dash 25 for $747,027.92, warrants paid by October 24th, 2024, 17A dash 25 for $114,418.35, and 17B dash 25 for $139,629.86.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is again, public input opportunity, is there anybody online? No?
Hi, Osama Field Mines.
Sure.
I've received some feedback from some members in the community about the Board of Health Agents.
Yep.
And I didn't know if you guys, maybe we can put on our agenda for our next meeting to discuss perhaps, maybe our town administrator could talk to all the different parties, like for maybe making the help, subbing out, you know, the inspections, like the food inspections and the septic inspections. Just something to consider with the economy. I don't have an opinion on it, just something to explore.
Sure.
What were their, what were their concerns?
Well, we haven't hired one for a while, and I think just, it's a way to look at savings. It would be one less salary. If, if there's a way we can provide those services and maybe offset the costs with the inspection fee, something to consider.
So you want to consider subbing it out with people who are not hired by, well, hired by the town, but not employed by the town?
Yeah.
Would it be a one full-time or part-time position? It would be a per diem?
Right, yes. Yep, kind of back how it was in the 2010 era.
Sure.
Of Dyton.
Okay.
We'll just have to look into, we'll probably lose that grant, which.
Okay.
Um, because then we won't have anything, but we'll, we'll include that in that discussion.
Okay, yeah, I'm not advocating for it either way, just want to look into it and then discuss it with all.
No, I understand where folks are coming from too, and if they don't, I don't think the public has a huge understanding of what the Health Department does.
Right.
Um, so that doesn't help, when you're like, what are they doing?
Yeah.
You're right. The Board of Health is much better shaped today than it's ever been, but I understand the need and the urgency for a health agent. The Board of Health itself is doing some of these inspections, and they're getting a little afraid.
Okay.
The hoarding is unfortunately not just a Dyton issue, but it is a big Dyton issue. And it is in all communities, and that really does, that really needs somebody like that.
Great. Any other发言, Al?
No, that's, thank you.
On to the minutes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of October 9th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
On to executive session, we need to.
I, I, I'm sorry, I only did one. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of October 16th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to executive session, we need a real call vote to go into executive session and then a motion on the floor. So is there a vote to go into executive session?
If you want to get from Tammy, she's, oh, what a hell.
Oh, yeah.
Tammy?
Yeah.
Tammy?
I don't, she's not in yet.
Let her in.
Tammy?
She's connected.
Tammy?
She might be trying to do the audio on the phone.
Tammy?
Maybe she just wanted to see us go into executive session.
Yeah, that's all.
I think so.
It's impressive, to see.
So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non- To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, administrative assistant, Board of Selectmen, Town Accountant. I guess I'll continue on here under Massachusetts General Laws 38, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of a general or specific law or federal-grade grant and aid requirements, approval of Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of August 21st, 2024, and approval of Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of September 25th, 24.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We will not be returning from executive session, so everyone, please have a good evening. Thank you.
We need a roll call vote?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry. I hope we.
So Mark Pacheco, aye.
Nicole Mello, aye.
And Peter Karen, aye.
Do you guys need that to be off recording?
No, we're done. Thank you. Oh, yes, it did. Did we miss it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do it again.
It is on my recording. Can you use mine?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it is on mine.
Awesome. Great, thank you, sir.
Nicole, so your point that you made earlier about people not knowing what different awards and department suit, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have the studio open, but I just send in a email, so I believe it's going to be, we have about getting people in there, kind of finding what their department suit.
Oh, good. I like that.
Yeah. Did you say without returning?
Yes, I did.
Beautiful, that's.
I wish you want to.
No.
Is she leaving?
Oh, okay. Like she didn't even say bye.
Was it something I said?